All right, the hour of seven has struck. I call this meeting to order, please rise. And trustee Highlandbach, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please pause for a moment of silence in memory of those who have recently perished, both in the fires and in terrible incidents in the state? Thank you. Clerk Blau, would you call the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Drapka?
Present on camera four.
Thank you. Trustee Highlandbach?
Present.
Supervisor Wilt?
Present.
I'll let the record note that trustee Lutford is not in attendance, and that clerk Blau is in attendance.
Thank you very much. We have in our packets the minutes of the meeting of October 9th. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th, 2018.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Township of Riverside Board of Trustees' Meeting of October 9th, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections or comments at this time? Hearing none. Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
I abstain.
Oh, and one abstention, thank you. Motion is carried. Next order, are there any communications, clerk Blau?
Yes, there are. We received a thank you note from Ann Hanerin, thanking the township for the youth facility for their Halloween event. I am enunciating that incorrectly. And thanking for the wonderful environment for the youth summer camp. We received a notice for Vera and the board members from Tom Wetzel, police chief. In March of 2018, the police department was awarded a $7,000 grant from the township, and he sent a copy of the squad card where these things purchased were installed. It was for Traffic Unit Squad. So I can pass that around.
We actually did receive, it was in the meeting last time, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we did address that, so, yes.
Okay, so that's fine.
And that one was also addressed last month.
Okay, and friends of the library?
I believe it was, let me see, yes, that one. So, only the one new, thank you very much.
Sorry, it was a redundant?
No, that's okay, it was left in your folders when you were out ill, so. And the record should reflect that trustee Lutford has joined us now. And there was no action to be taken, that was simply a thank you on the communications. So, before we get to the grants, and we have moved them to the beginning of the meeting to facilitate those who have attended for that purpose, are there any visitors' remarks that are not related to the grants that we'll be addressing in just a moment? Then everybody's here regarding grants, welcome. And let's go on to new business then. And under grants, the first one we have is from the Riverside Chamber of Commerce. This is to pay for the magician that performs at the holiday stroll here in this building. A couple of trustees have noted to me individually that we've already made two grants to this organization this year, and that this would be a third, and our policy is for two. However, we've been funding this particular program for decades, I believe, and it's kind of become a standard part of the holiday stroll, and it's the way that the township actually brings people over here. That, and the District 96 choirs. So I would propose, if you don't mind, that we adopt this particular expense as one of our township programs, rather than treating it like a grant, and going forward, we'll just tell the Chamber of Commerce that we'd be willing to do that. But I put that out for your consideration.
I have a question. When I was looking at the grants awarded in previous years, didn't we award them $10,000 for the Riverfest for the tent? I think it wasn't that much, I thought it was that much.
This year?
Yeah, this past year, and...
No, at the very back of...
Riverfest is in July, I thought we paid for the tent, and it was close to $10,000.
No.
No? I'm not remembering that right?
I don't believe so.
$10,000.
Trying to think of who that would have gone to, it probably didn't go...
Went to the chamber.
Did it go to the chamber directly, or did it go to the vendor?
No, it went to, I think it went, well, the chamber requested, remember Nick Fournier was in here?
It was Fort Pines.
That's for the car show.
Right.
That was for the car show, and then it says $2,500 for Riverfest, but...
Right.
I thought it was much more than...
No, it was $2,500, and they provided...
$2,574, yeah.
Yeah, they provided us with a banner that went across. We sponsored the stage.
We, oh, just the stage, I thought we sponsored the tent.
Just the stage, right.
Now, that may have been in their list of the costs for Riverfest, but this was the request, this was the grant that we actually awarded.
And then they're not doing Riverfest in 2019 because it hasn't made money.
Okay.
So...
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, so, you know, we won't be giving a grant for that.
Well, then what we can always consider next year, if they do want to make that part of their grant request, but, you know, again, I would submit for your consideration, rather than treating this as a grant this time, because it's something that people have come to expect here in the town hall, that perhaps even though it's been presented as a grant request, that the township fund that as one of the youth programs that we actually do.
So, do we just have to adopt it as a town program?
What do you want the motion to be, that...
I would say the motion should say that in lieu of granting to the Riverside Chamber for this, that the township adopt that particular performance as a town program for youth this year.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Any objections? Then, since we're expending money, clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yeah.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, did we want to include the $600 amount in that?
Probably should mention that. Yes, include that in the...
Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Sure, yes, thank you. Okay.
I do apologize for my casual attire tonight, I had a previous engagement.
Came from coaching.
Came from practice room.
So we will acknowledge that, and welcome you in any wardrobe that you chose to wear tonight. Okay, the next grant is a request from the American Legion, and this has to do with the Veterans Memorial in Guthrie Park across the street. They're requesting $2,000. We have obviously several people from the American Legion, by their garb, we know that. Would somebody like to address us regarding this grant? Please identify yourself first, and then you may speak.
Yes, that's all right. My name is Tom Sisalock, live on Eric Road, and I'm representing the American Legion, or speaking for the American Legion Post 488, although I'm not a member. I am a member of the Sons of the American Legion, and honoring my father, who was in World War II in Africa for four years. And this Gold Star Memorial renovation project also relates to the program. I think I gave everybody a copy. If you open that program, which is from our program this past May 28th, on the inside page, page number two, you can see the complete list of the Riverside 54. So on page two, inside the program, you can see the complete list of the Riverside 54. These are all young men from Riverside who were killed in action. Three from World War I, 44 from World War II, five from the Korean War, and two from Vietnam. Many of these brave young men were recent high school graduates, some of them even dropped out of high school, especially during World War II, to volunteer. And these are the 54 who we are trying to honor and renovate the Gold Star Memorial, which is in the center of Guthrie Park by the flagpole. I actually started this renovation project 12 years ago. Still working on it, and with all the help from the American Legion and many residents of Riverside, we are still pursuing the start and the completion of this renovation project. The actual site was started in 1919, and that was by the families and the children, students, teachers at Central School. They actually organized to have a monument, memorial, in honor of the three students, so to speak, who were killed in action during World War I. They raised the funds, they had the stones, the four small stones on each corner of the concrete plate where the flagpoles in the center. They organized the site, the purchase of the four stones, the bronze plaques, and they organized the first dedication program, which was in 1920. And essentially, nothing has been done to that site since 1920. So almost 100 years, and the main problem with that site, obviously due to the lack of attention, is the fact that these stones, of which there was a new, very large granite stone, about 4,000 pounds, I'm estimating, added after World War II, which has three big plaques on it. And I recognize, when I took my dad to Memorial Day in 2007, that approximately 14 names are actually under the dirt. So these young men who gave their lives, their names are under the dirt in our memorial site. So I said, this is totally unacceptable to myself, and been working on it ever since. The stone, the big stone, along with the four small ones, they actually need to be lifted up, have a concrete footing, very large under the big stone, smaller under the small stones. Then the stones reattached to a nice concrete footing, so they'll never sink any longer. There are no footings under the five stones right now. The flagpole also needs to be sanded and repainted. Nowadays, a lot of modern flagpoles have an electrical motor. The cord is inside, so the flags can't be stolen, we actually don't want that. We want the traditional long cord, so the scouts can actually do the ceremony of raising the flag, lowering it, bringing it back to half-staff. But the flagpole does need to be sanded, repainted. The underground electrical wire, I think there's one right now, needs to be upgraded so that we can hopefully add maybe four other lights that will shine on the flag, which has to be lit when the flag is there 24 hours a day. Currently, there is $5,000, which the American Legion Post provided to a new checking account, not really new anymore, it's been there for six years already, which is in the Village of Riverside checking account for this project. We've also had approximately $900 contributed from Riverside residents towards this project. Our new commander of Post 44, excuse me, 488, Commander Joe Topinka, has established another checking account just for the American Legion, which we've required through his efforts, another $7,000. So our total is approximately $13,000. And according to the Village Public Works Director, he has estimated this project's going to cost $28,000 for the concrete footings, the painting of the flagpole, new lights. I know that our commander, Joe Topinka, has put forth the grant request to the Township of Riverside for an additional $2,000, which would greatly help towards the $28,000 estimated cost. However, if this Township of Riverside is highly motivated and inspired by the need of this project, since they're all former Riverside young boys who grew up here in the village, rode their bikes, went sledding, volunteered, they actually left from the Riverside train station, never came home. Many of these soldiers are still buried in Belgium, in France. The Riverside Library is working on trying to locate where they are buried, any of their family members that still might be living. And if the township is highly motivated, obviously, the difference is about $15,000. I don't know what your remaining budget is for 2018, or a new budget starting in 2019, but that would be a tremendous grant of $15,000 to help get this project finally started and hopefully completed. So, those are some of the additional items I wanted to present. And if you look on the program, on page three, every year, we recognize one of Riverside's very honored military veterans. And this year, we honored Lieutenant Colonel James Sullivan, who was right here this evening, US Marine pilot. And I hope that you can attend the Memorial Day Program this coming May 27th, I believe it is, 2019, will be at St. Mary's Parish Center. We now have between 400 and 600 people that attend. I changed this program to a family educational event, where all the families are invited. And we have as our main philosophy to teach the children the true meaning of Memorial Day, not just another vacation day from school. So with that, if there are any questions?
Thank you very much. That was a very thorough application that was presented as well. The numbers in Commander Topinka's write-up indicated about 26,000, and that the goal is to have this installed before Memorial Day of this coming year, and that the village has also promised to put a chunk of this into their budget, is our understanding, so hopefully...
That would be nice, I'm not aware of that.
Right, so hopefully, you will gather those funds in time to do that.
I don't know if these other two veterans would like to make a comment?
Okay. Anybody want to speak to it, all right?
Thanks, Tom. Hi, I'm Dan Creek, resident of Rockefeller in Riverside Township. I'm the vice commander of the Post 488 here at Riverside, the American Legion Post. I wanted to thank Tom for all of his work over the years. I mean, he's been steadfast at trying to honor these 54 fallen citizens, our brothers and sisters, our grandfathers, our fathers. 54 men who went away to war to defend our country, our way of life, our town, and who never got a chance to enjoy their lives at all. I think it's really important that we honor them, and one of the least, smallest things we can do is have their name engraved on a plaque, and we can honor it and have it appear in good form so that we can read their name and we can remember their name. If a person's name is still alive after a fashion, they are alive. And again, this is something that Tom's been working at for the last 12 years. The Post has begun getting involved in this in the last year and a half or so. And just, I just wanted to mention, as a Marine, and as the son of a Marine, memorializing those who have fallen is really important. It's important to all of us as citizens, as well as to our veterans in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Trustee Clark?
Well, first of all, thank you for your service, we all really appreciate it. But where are you in your process to get a tax-exempt status? It doesn't look like you've applied for that in this packet.
There's a packet there.
I see your...
Yeah, there's...
Well, I see your employee ID number, but I don't see anything saying you're a 501(c)(3).
So that's with the state right now, and the state is reviewing this.
Okay. So you haven't officially received them?
We haven't received them, right.
So what were you before?
So, the Post has gone through a number of changes over the years. We recently lost our Post Commander, three years ago, four years ago, I think it was. And as the Post had consolidated, we lost members. I believe that the certification was lost as it went along. We've reinvigorated the Post in the last year, year and a half. We're striving towards having the paperwork so that we can be a 501(c)(3). And as I said, it's before the state right now.
Yeah, do we grant?
And you're not granting it.
So our grant application requests whatever proof that they have, and the fact that they are filed in the state as a general not-for-profit corporation has been accepted for other organizations as well. It wasn't always necessarily a 501(c)(3), but if they were organized as a nonprofit in the state, that also was acknowledged. That was all the proof we had from some other organizations.
Okay, so legally, we can grant this if their paperwork is in the state, but hasn't...
Well, yeah, that's the question, because I think our rules also say that the organization has to have been in existence for a certain period. And they've been, it's just the merger has changed the character of the organization, correct?
Yes. As far as I also understand the history, the Post 488 was actually started shortly after World War I, around 1920, and has been in existence ever since then. Of course, the membership was very large after World War II, and they even had their own location on Quincy, which they then sold that building, I'm guessing around the early 1970s. And like a lot of American Legion Posts and VFW Posts, they've decreased in membership. And our Post is still going, which was also kind of fortunate with the restart by myself of the Memorial Day Program, and that's brought in a lot of new members in the last two years, especially with Commander Joe Topinka leading the Post right now. But it has been in existence since 1920.
Very good, thank you.
But was it a 501(c)(3)?
I don't know if 501(c)...
I think they had a...
I think actually, I actually think that veterans' organizations may fall under a number that's a little different than the (c)(3). I think that military might be, you know, I know that some organizations are (c)(8), so, you know, it may be a different number.
The American Legion, when it started, which was right after World War I, was actually, through an act of Congress, that recommended villages start their own American Legion Post. So, like Vera said, it might be under a different category of certification.
The American Legion itself is a tax-exempt, federally tax-exempt, I'm not sure which paragraph it fits under. And so you are a recognized subunit of that, so that's, that is generally acceptable that way. Sometimes, individual units of national organizations that way go after their own 501(c)(3), so that should something fall apart at the national level or something, so they still have that character, but...
So legally, through our rules, we can grant this?
I believe, I believe so, yes.
I mean, I'm all for anything for veterans, but I just want to make sure, you know, we're not breaking it.
That we're legal, right.
That we're within our legal limits.
I don't believe that there's any problem with that.
And that's also what our present commander, Joe Topinka, is a US Army Attorney, and that's why he is working towards this final paperwork certification.
Can I make a motion that we have awarded...
Hold on a second, I've got a question.
Okay, sorry, Tim.
We fill out a grant application for $2,000. And, I mean, again, like trustee Clark said, I'd love to give anything to our veterans.
I mean honestly, within reason, you know, within our budget. But can we go just the $2,000 on this, because that's what the application states?
I think we have to go with the $2,000, and then they can come back in February at our next granting thing and, you know, ask for more.
Especially you have a hard number at that point. And we have a chance to give them two grants a year, so...
And speaking on precedent, I know that we've awarded grants in lower amount, but we've never, at least this board hasn't gone above the amount as...
As the grant, that's right.
We've gone lower, but we haven't gone higher.
I don't think we can go...
Right.
There's still time for a second app.
Which they're welcome to come back in February.
For a second grant.
With a hard number.
Right.
Yes.
And our fiscal year runs from April 1st...
April 1st to March 31st.
To March 31st, so that's what our fiscal year runs. So it's in that timeframe...
Right.
From April 1st to March 31st that we can award two grants.
Give a second, yes, right.
Thank you, thank you for that information.
So, then I would make a motion to award this $2,000 grant to the American Legion Post Number 0488.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Highlandbach, to grant the $2,000 requested amount to the American Legion Post Number 488 for the memorial. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one up is the Riverside Brookfield High School Student Services Department, application for, and that's all attached for, as you see, all the material here. The amount requested is $1,635, and it is for technology, iPad, various items in the second part of this. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to this? Good evening. Please identify yourself first.
Sure. My name is Mitch Zillinger, I'm one of the school's social workers at Riverside Brookfield High School. My partner, who's actually submitted the grant, is not able to make it tonight, her name is Chrissy Tapper. Pretty much what we're looking for with this money is what's saved for the iPad, and then iPad accessories that go along with that. So two iPads, cases, and then also some applications that we can use. So, we're averaging right now about 70% of our students at the school are using some sort of service down inside of student services, which houses our school's social workers, as well as our counselors and various other professionals as well. So, to keep up with the high demand that we're getting with the increasing mental health needs, we're hoping to get a couple iPads that would help us with applications such as Headspace, as well as another one called Calm, which are really applications that we can use on an individual counseling basis, as well as group counseling, for when we're with our students to help with meditation, tracking their behaviors to better assist us in counseling with them, and then also just various other features. Mainly what we're hoping to use with the applications too, is when we are with students, these applications will help them be able to process on their own. So when they come in and they're in crisis, they can use these different applications that we've identified and that other schools are using to sit down and try to self... and try to self-regulate themselves back to a normal level until we're able to get, or until one of our professionals freed up to get with them. So, we kind of have three different usages for these applications. So, um, yeah, that's what we're looking for.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Ford?
So this, this is only for two iPads?
Correct, yeah, so.
You know, Black Friday school.
Very true. It's two, it's.
iPads?
So it's two iPads? I mean, we'd love to get more, we had to start somewhere. But, um, mainly what we want to do with those iPads are the applications, and the applications are the expensive things. If you look at the list, they're $500 one-time fee, $400 one-time fee. Um, those are the real expensive things, and, and so that's what we're really looking to get some help with.
It says $400 for one and $300 for one?
That could be right, yeah, sorry.
Okay. And these, you just listen through the headphones?
No, so they're, you can. So when a student comes in to process on their own, what's neat about these applications is that they kind of walk you through step by step. So if we look at Calm, which is one that can be used in a group setting for students with anxiety, depression, um, sometimes on the trauma side, um, depending on what that trauma looks like, these applications are seven-day programs. So when a student, when we get a group of students of like 15 of them, we can use these applications, um, you know, you can click play on a seven-day program. It'll be a 45-minute lesson for them on how to kind of regulate themselves down or go through coping skills or mindfulness activities, whatever it may be. So it's just another tool that we can use to help us, which also frees up more time to help students who might be in crisis.
Very good. Other questions? Then what is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the amount of $1,635 for Riverside Brookfield High School for their grant for the iPads, generation iPad pencil, pencil tips, Tech 21 EVO Play 2 case, Headspace subscription, and the Calm subscription.
I'll second that.
I think it's very important, absolutely important for this group.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Trustee Heilenbach, seconded by Trustee Lupfer, to approve the $1,635 grant for the technology for these, and the software for these needs. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Then Clerk Law, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And the next application is from the Prairie Trail Federation. And this is a group that we know from last year. And is there someone here to speak to this? First off, does anybody have any questions? We had not only an application last year, but we had a very nice report afterwards of how it was utilized.
That is always very important.
Yes.
As you know from previous, you know, meetings, my name is Stephen Gretchen. I'm the current Federation Chief for the Indian Princess Program, also a previous member of the Kiwachina Tribe, which is the local Indian Guides Tribe, and a current member of the Kachina Tribe. I've asked Matt Joseph and Matthew Wolf to join me this evening. Uh, Matt Joseph is the current President and Chief of the Kachina Tribe, which is the girls' tribe, and Matt is the current Treasurer of the Kiwachina Tribe, which is the boys' tribe.
Very good. Are there any questions? If not, what is your pleasure?
What is, uh, this is going to be used for, like, to give scholarships for people that?
Correct, yeah.
Can't afford.
We use scholarships for fathers and sons last year that needed them. Uh, we also used the funds last year for some advertising, and we use the funds for payment for the scout captain.
The run for the scout captain.
That's correct.
Yeah, your breakdown is on the second, the second page of the.
Of the attachment?
Right.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the report that you put together in the last round. That was very nice. So I make a motion to go ahead and approve this grant.
I have a motion to approve the grant?
I'll second it.
Seconded by, motion by Trustee Drapka, seconded by Trustee Lupfer. Any questions or discussion? Then Clerk Law, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You'll come back and give us a report, won't you?
I, I can come back, or we can have one of the other gentlemen.
One of the other gentlemen, be fine.
We'll definitely come back and give your report.
I appreciate it, because we like hearing, you know, how it went.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, and the final grant that we have before us is from the Riverside Public Library. As with others, when it's to a taxing body, we would buy the, uh, the items directly. And, um, is there anyone here from the library to speak to this? All right. So does the board have any questions that maybe we can help each other with?
This is just a continuation of the same program we support.
Same kinds of programs that we supported before, correct. They're just keep getting more modules in that, um, program.
That's a lot cheaper than what.
And it looks like they expect to pay even less, because that's the retail figure, and they expect Black Friday or, um, what is it, Monday?
Amazon discount something.
All right, what was your pleasure? Yes.
Uh, we would order this stuff and just.
Yes, we order it with pay for.
Pay the bill. So if it comes out less than what they're retail.
Right.
Then that's okay.
Let's order this tomorrow. Let's go.
Black Friday.
I think Cyber Monday might even be the better day.
Cyber Monday.
I saw an advertisement that said Amazon is having their Black Friday all over.
Oh, right, oh, all the way through, yes. They start tomorrow and all the way through.
All over it.
Advertising works, I guess, so.
I make a motion that we approve the grant for $294.80 to the Riverside Library for the funding of their development and learning kits.
Second. Okay, we have, we have a motion by Trustee Heilenbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to approve the grant request to the Riverside Public Library. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Then Clerk Law, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right, thank you. All the grants are completed. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to at this point. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Perhaps when, when some of these items come, rather than a check, we can take pictures with the items that are ordered.
There you go.
Okay. Next order of business is the preliminary tax levy discussion. You all, you do have the, uh, the request from the Mental Health Board. As you can see, they are looking to go less than the CPI possible rate of 2.1. They're looking for 1.5%. Um, I, unfortunately, I just got some of the numbers for the township itself. Um, and I also think that we should, for both the general funds, as well as for general assistance, go at less than the CPI because we're fairly well-heeled, and I don't want to abuse the taxpayers, especially at a time when they've had a recent reassessment. Um, we could go with the 1.5% like they have gone, or we could even probably go less, especially on general assistance. We've been very fortunate that we haven't had a huge clamoring. That's a fund that is allowed to be a little heavier in its, um, funding because an emergency can happen, and you go through those funds very, very quickly. Uh, for example, if there's burials or anything like that. So, I don't know what you would like to see, but I will also make a point of telling you that based on last year's levy, the actual extensions, in other words, what we actually got compared to the levy in all funds, was a little bit higher. So you see, you have the one from the Mental Health Board, and the ta, uh, the tax extension grand total was 609, 849. Now, that's not to say that there won't be appeals that will drain back some of that money. And in fact, we've gotten a notice that, and it won't affect these, these taxes, but going forward, the mall has once again, you know, uh, filed, the, many of the big anchor stores have filed appeals to try to get their assessments changed. But the last year, the levy that we set for the general town tax was 545,000, 643, 545 and, and 600,000. The actual extension was 552, 316, so it was, uh, about, um, not quite 7,000 more. For the general assistance, our levy was 65, 680, and the actual amount was 69,039. And then the community mental health, uh, their assessment, uh, their levy, sorry, last year was 606, 270. And as you see, the starting number here, the actual extension was 609, so about $3,500 more. Um, so I think that we're okay. I would recommend, and I've got the accountant working on all of the figures that have to go into it, but, um, I think we'd be okay in keeping the, the increase to the levy very moderate. I'll, I'll welcome any discussion. I would probably even go with maybe just 1% rather, or 1.5% max.
I concur.
Is this, um, something we're voting on, or we're just discussing? Because we'll vote it on.
Well, we're discussing it now, and then at the next meeting, we, yeah. Our next meeting is early in the month, so we'll have the full. But I would like to know what number you'd like to work with if, uh, you. I mean, we'll, we'll work it up. I can do multiple options, and that's what we did last year. Um, but, you know, in all cases, it would be, for example, if we went with, uh, 1.5% for the regu, the general town fund, that would increase the levy by $8,285, if we went with the 1.5%. If we went with just 1%, it would be an increase of $5,005.23. That allows for some, you know, you do have some inflation. We do expect certain expenses to come due that we may have been deferring. Um, you know, this is at a different time than your actual budgeting, but we've been very responsible in our expenditures. Uh, similarly, in the general assistance, to, uh, even if we went with half a percent, that would only be $345 difference. So obviously, it would be $690 if we went with 1% or, you know, roughly $1,000 difference if we went with 1.5%.
Let's go with 1.5.
Go with 1.5?
I, I.
Go with zero.
You want to go with zero? I don't know.
I would say, if you can, and I know you're busy, I would go 1% and 1.5. Let's see the numbers, compare it out. But I also, I also think that, uh, we've got some expense, expenses that, you know, I worry about this roof.
The roof, yes.
And I worry about the swinging bridge.
Right, and we are going to be, you know, as we put into reserve for the roof last, in the last budget, we're going to do that again in the next budget, I assure you. And the bridge, yeah, the bridge is, uh.
Because I, I don't want to.
It's going to be a cost.
Roll a bond on that. Well, you know, that's why we, we.
Right.
We do this and I keep the, you know.
Right. We can always move, you know, I'm not too worried about, uh, like I said, general assistance is in, in good shape, and we could always make a contribution to general assistance from general funds, but we can't do the reverse, so.
Well, we just have to plan for the future.
Yes, we do.
We have to put stuff aside for the future.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You know, making improvements on this building, and now that, what we did with the whole rental agreement, when we're going to have more of a flow in here for weddings and parties and whatever, you know. I mean, uh, you know, this, this building is a historic structure and, and something that's great for the community, but we are the ones that are taking care of it. We have to make sure that this is going to survive, and it's in good shape, you know. So we have to, we have to plan for that.
Okay.
Well, we've also been fiscally responsible in the last couple of years.
That's right.
Make sure, as well as previous boards have also. Just making sure that, you know, we've got, uh, the rainy day for the roof and, and, and the swinging bridge, and we're looking at some stuff to do with that. So, I, I really think that you can, you can look at both 1% and 1.5%. That's what my suggestion is. And then, uh, when it comes time to do it, we're still going to be under the 2.1.
And they're very small amounts, as you hear what I, what I just told you how much that would increase it. It's, you know, when you stretch it across the number of properties, in some cases, you're looking at a dollar.
A dollar, a dollar a household, right.
It's really not a, not a big deal. All right, I will have that prepared for the next meeting at 1% and 1.5%. And when you look at all of that, and we can take a look at where our expenditures have been, I encourage you to look at that every month. You, you get the update on where we stand, um, against the budget year-to-date. So please take a look at that and see, you know, where we are on that. All right, then, uh, you also have some material. I was approached by an organization that, Twin Supplies Limited, which has gone about, they, they basically retrofit electrical lighting. Um, and I'm sure you've all heard of some of the incentives that the utility companies give if you go to more efficient lighting and so forth. I added the, the other, uh, the interior work estimate only came in today, so that's why I just added it today or yesterday, and that's why I just added it. Uh, it wasn't in your packets, but with your packets, bless you. Certainly don't need to, uh, come to any decision right now, especially on the interior, um, items. The interior, the buil, the building's electricity, because we share the facility with the municipality of the Village of Riverside, actually neither of us pays the electric bill. We get a statement that shows what the cost would be, and it's zeroed out. There's a special, special consideration for municipalities. However, we do pay the electricity for the lighting of the bridge, because that doesn't have to do with the village, and for the streetlights in Riverside Lawn. They did not give me an estimate on the Riverside Lawn, but the first one that is actually attached and punched and in your books was for the bridge lighting. As you can see, it's not a very large investment. Uh, the anticipation, if you see the second page, the anticipation is that the cost of replacing the lighting is actually, you know, the, it's paid off in, um, let me see, where's that one? 24 months, in two years it would be. It would, uh, break even, and then we would continue to save. And, um, 10-year warranties on these. In most cases, what they're pitching is that these are, um, these don't need replacing. Some of these tubes that, for example, for the inside lighting, they're actually plastic tubes. You don't replace them like you do the, um, the other kinds of tubes. So it, it just came across my desk very recently. Just wanted to, uh, give you a heads-up on it and see what your thoughts were.
So what's the, what's the other printout for?
The other printout would be for the, inside the building. So, obviously, we wouldn't be generating the savings because we're not paying the utility bill. However, we wouldn't be changing bulbs, we wouldn't have the cost of bulbs and that kind of thing.
So are we, so the total for the swinging bridge is 1,194?
194, correct.
Are we voting on this tonight?
Uh, we can, that it's up, you know, it's on the agenda, and you have all the information that I have, other than we, we talked about it with, uh, there were two gentlemen who came out about it, and they, um... out about it, and they, they not only evaluated the need, but they also gave me a bid for them to do it. We could also go out for other bids on that.
Yeah, where did these guys come from?
They've worked with other municipalities, so they, they were, they, no, they called. I mean, they set an appointment, they explained what they do, and they had, I didn't bring in the, the notes from our prior meeting, but, you know, they've worked with municipalities in the area, they've worked with Cicero, with Berwin, and so forth.
Yeah, I'd be interested in putting a bid out for, and get a couple of the bids.
Okay, all right.
I'm also concerned about the labor, for one hundred and fifty dollars, seems a little cheap, not that I care, but I mean, we need certified payroll for any of that.
Right, right, right. So, I just, you know, it was really a little premature, it came up very suddenly, I only met with them last week, and I said, well, if you want to get me some information, you know, we have a meeting next week, so, that's what I have so far, just know that, you know, we can put this on, on the agenda in the future, and this is what it's.
Yeah, if you can get a couple more estimates.
Yeah, I put a bid, probably, you know, bid it out, and let's see a three, four, whatever, whoever responds to it.
I would, I would like to look at, I mean, Trustee Hahnbach is talking about, he's worried about the bridge, what kind of maintenance is coming up. If part of what we have to do to the bridge is retrofit the electricity, I wouldn't want to be repeating work.
Mm-hmm.
So, have we had an, an analysis of the bridge?
So, we have not. So, the last engineering assessment of the bridge was approximately seven, eight years ago, and at that time, it was done before the painting. It was in good shape, there were some very minor repairs that were reme, recommended that were done, and otherwise, it was a paint job. But I think that come spring, we need to do that again. We need to get a proper engineering evaluation. We've had some interesting weather conditions, river rose and fell quite a bit over the last couple of years, and I think it would be wise, we know we can look at and see that some of the paint needs fixing, but I also want to make sure that we would get that done in a proper, proper manner. Some of it seems like it perhaps blistered sooner than it should have and so forth.
Well, maybe we should put this project off, you can get those estimates, but if we're going to need to be painting.
Right.
Whatever.
Okay.
Like Trustee Lupfer said, we should just, you know, wait and get it all done at one time.
Yeah, that's what.
Very good. It, like I said, it was something that just came up, so I wanted you to be aware of what's going on.
So, who drives about?
Yes.
Can we rearrange the agenda so Jennifer Fournier can, you know, talk to us and then do our reports?
Absolutely. I want to go to the communication planning township website for unfinished business, yes, we can certainly do those reports after the fact. So, if no, no other trustees have any objection to moving the agenda?
No.
Okay, then let's look at that. There's really been no change when we had our discussion last time. It was felt that there was a trustee missing who might want some input, and, so this is up for your consideration and approval tonight. Trustee Dropka, you were the one who was absent. Did you have any questions on this that you would like to address? You also didn't have the benefit of being at our communications meetings, so.
Yeah, um, no, I, I, the township website needs to get updated, so.
I think it's all right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then I will entertain a motion to.
I move that we accept the proposal from Via De Giroti to rework our website, and the amount of, as indicated on the proposal.
I second.
I have a motion by Trustee Lupfer, a second by Trustee Dropka, to approve the proposal from Via De Giroti, and go forward with the update of our website. Just as an aside, Toy decided to do some, I don't know if they changed their, whoever was handling their website, but we went for a week or two when we couldn't even find our own stuff on the website.
Well, good, because then we can finally get off of that anyways, right?
Right.
So, we'll get our own domain name, right?
That's part of the whole proposal.
And email addresses, too.
Yeah.
So, you don't have to use your personal email addresses, you could go through.
So, the one thing that, that I've had constituents express concerns about is agendas and minutes. Are we, those will be posted?
That would be a separate decision for this board to make, if we want to post them or not, because there are, you know, they shouldn't be posted until they've been approved, for one.
The minutes.
Minutes, yes. And agendas, certainly, that's a place that you, we can use to publish it, just like, you know, it goes up on the wall, and it goes, you know, when it's a special meeting, it goes in the paper, but we certainly could post those.
Well, let's just get it up and running, and then we can worry about all the details later.
This is a two-year investment, this total cost?
It's, uh, one, so, what about you, tell me what you're approving. So, the first year, I think, is what we're approving, and then those are expected costs for year two, so we can make that decision then, or you can make it now.
Because that second year, it kind of depends on.
Your investment significantly increases.
Right.
And, a lot of this year is figuring out what you need to do, how, however much I can teach your staff, you know, to, to have you facilitate it more fluidly, like, I want to get you to a point of independence.
Okay. So, that twenty, twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, that's the total cost of the first year. No ups, no extras, as they say in the biz?
All maintenance, all building, all prioritization and optimization.
Excellent, excellent. And compared to others, the, the people on this committee, the trustees and supervisor, Will, where did this come in at as far as cost?
Well, I think the, I've seen five thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars. I think it's a very competitively priced.
Okay.
It's the, the interactive, interactivity that we're going to have, it's not the control that we'll have, which is really, I think, what we're buying. So, it's, from what I've seen, it's a great price.
The other organization that I was working with at first really wanted to take over a lot of things, and wanted to be our marketing team and all.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
They just didn't, when I suggested that we, this was the framework that we wanted to do, they didn't even, they walked away from it, basically.
Right, right.
So.
So, we're only approving year one, correct? Are we, are we making a motion?
Well, we can really only approve, that is a fixed price. The other will depend on what happens in year one, and if we decide to go into wider, wider things, if we decide that our social media presence is going to go in many different directions, then that could, that could be higher, it could be less, I suppose, depending on, so that, that second year is very much of an estimate.
Okay, so we're not approving that, just first?
Correct, we're only approving the first year.
Thank you.
All right, and.
Do we have a motion?
We do not yet.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a motion, sorry. Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Yes.
Yes, we have a motion?
Yes, we have a second, I apologize.
Yes, a motion by Lupfer, a second by Dropka, so.
Just for the first year only, that was.
Correct.
Could you, okay.
So, Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hahnbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jennifer, for coming back.
Yes, thanks.
And so then, let's go back to our reports. Just as an update, we still expect a few stragglers to come in tomorrow, but we had kind of a low turnout for our turkeys this year. We only put out thirty-three, we were ready for forty-two families. Last year, we put out forty-one, and we usually get in that forty range, so we're not sure what happened this time, if people are feeling better about the economy, maybe they're doing better, and it's always hard to tell, because we have, you know, our food pantry people come and go, some, sometimes they stay away for months at a time and then come back, so. There are still a few that normally come that have not shown up. We gave out the turkeys Thursday, Friday, and, I'm sorry, Friday, yesterday, and today, so we, we think this, no, it was Thursday, Friday, and Monday, and then we gave a few more today. I don't have a lot of people on general assistance, so I have, I had one that just graduated out of it, basically, yes. And so, we're, we're doing pretty, pretty well in that regard, but we had some new faces show up who heard that we were giving away turkeys to everybody in the township. I went, no, we don't have room for turkeys for everybody in the township, but it's, it's interesting, but we're always glad to help out, so.
What happens to the extra ones?
So, the extra turkeys will remain frozen, and we will give them as an option, when I put out, when they were picking up, or as they've been coming for food pantry this past week or so, we've been giving them the letter for Christmas holidays. Hams have never been as popular, so I actually put in there, expecting to have a few extra, let us know if you'd prefer a turkey, so.
Oh, okay, oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, so we, the, those will remain in the freezer, and, you know, we'll give people the option, and we won't have to buy as many hams, probably. And the rest of the, their, the rest of the items will go, the non-perishable items can go back in the food pantry, and there are a few perishable items, and I would say that regular visitors to the food pantry over the next week or so can get some more perishable items that we'll keep refrigerated until then, there's, you know, some whipped cream and butter, and what else is there? There's one other item, so, that's about it. As far as other items, I distributed this evening a proclamation. Brookfield has recently celebrated its one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. I wrote up a proclamation, if you think that this would be acceptable, we, they, their date, and I didn't hear it publicized a great deal, but then again, I don't live in Brookfield. The actual one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary date was recognized as November seventh, that has come and gone. However, the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of their first village board meeting is coming up on January second, so my proclamation suggests that January second, twenty nineteen, be celebrated as Brookfield Day in the Township of Riverside. Otherwise, the proclamation has a lot of whereases, listing their history, and that history was gleaned from, from their website and came about several years ago by their historical committee, who pulled all of those timeline dates out. So, if, if you so desire, we can approve this proclamation and, and present it to the Village of Brookfield.
I make a motion, we approve the proclamation to honor the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the establishment of the Village of Brookfield.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. And thank you for the suggestion, Trustee Dropka. Furthermore, let's see, I was just, I just got an email today, as a matter of fact, regarding, from a division of Cook County, which deals with, what do you know, energy efficiency, and they offer literature as well as presentations for the community, so I'm going to look for, further into that, and maybe that would be a presentation that they could come out and make at some point when it's not horribly cold, and our people will actually come out. So, I'm going to look further into that. I want to let you know that I also met with Paychex, who does our payroll, and you know that we, I've been talking about getting into an update or a, an update of our employee's manual and some of the other organizational factors, and Paychex had a very reasonable charge for doing that, for getting into their software, having access to a consultant, for adding other things for customizing it. They won't, not do a full-blown, but this gives me a template and a consultant on hand to, to work with it, so it's, and it also gives us a lot of the updated documents that we really don't have in terms of employee evaluations, record-keeping, and things like that. So, it was, there was a special going on, I believe it was something like five hundred dollars, it's in your warrants, I think, to go forward with that, so that was a bargain. And that's about it. We've been busy with the food pantry, the nurse's closet, after our last newsletter has been bursting at the seams, people coming and going and donating. We, barely a day goes by when somebody doesn't come for nurse's closet, and they're thrilled with it. So, I think that we should be very proud of that feature. That's all I have to report. Trustees, Mary Robb, would you?
Well, the seniors have their annual pizza party in November at the golf club. We only had about ten this year, ten or eleven. Normally, we have about thirty, so I'm not really sure what's happening there. But, our holiday party is Tuesday, December fourth, also at the golf club, at twelve o'clock. You, the board is invited to attend, and for the seniors, it's twenty-five dollars a person. And we have some, a really great musical group that's very audience-interactive, called The Frozen Robbins. And then, starting in two thousand and nineteen, we're only going to, like, a monthly social hour, and then we'll do a quarterly outing. For, the, for, actually, the first quarter, we have a band, Switchback, it's a Celtic folk band that the seniors really enjoy.
That we usually do in March, right?
We'll do that sometime in March, yeah.
Okay, and you were going to put together a calendar for all the dates upfront, so that.
I wrote together a cal, yes.
And then maybe we can publish that in the next newsletter?
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. Trustee Dropka?
No report.
Trustee Hahnbach?
Well, the Mental Health Board, as you probably have heard, if you haven't, our treasurer passed away on Wednesday. It's a big blow for the Mental Health Board. Judy Novak was with us for thirty-nine years, and served as president and vice president, all officers, and she was a big inspiration and a big help. She came up with some really good ideas, and she will be terribly missed. But we are moving forward on some programs. The Special Recreation Program is going before WSSRA for the final review, we see no problems with that, on December eleventh. On December, I think it's thirteenth, C-Spar is going to consider the same thing. So, we are bringing Brookfield into that Special Recreation, and they will have, they're, they work a little differently, they don't have a transportation fee, it's all wrapped up into the participation fee, so we will take care of half of that participat, participation fee for Riverside Township residents. We are also in the midst of starting a program where we're going to have a social worker here at the Township Hall, three days a week, about fifteen hours a week, some evenings, some Saturdays. I've been working with Supervisor Wilt on this. We painted with kind of a broad brush when we first proposed this to our agencies, they got it down a little bit, we've asked them to go back again, and we should be ready to go with this program in April. And this program is going to make sure that if somebody comes in that needs some type of an assistance, it's triage, we'll be able to direct them in, in the where to go, hand them some pamphlets, explain to them the insurance and Medicare to them, so it'll be more of a triage thing, and I'm really excited about this program, I think it's going to work out real nice. And we'll have several other things going out through next, throughout the next fiscal year. We're, we're very busy trying to move stuff forward to give our township residents, you know, more help, and for us to be more visible if they need help.
What a wonderful program.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think we have examples every day in the news. I think we have examples every day in the news of why that's such an important factor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Uh, it was also pointed out, somebody who had, uh, one of the residents, uh, pointed out to me when you had mentioned that you're providing some training for the first responders, that there are some free, uh, programs available for that.
Right, we understand that and, and what we're having is NAMI, uh, and I don't ask, don't, they're that acronym, but they are the ones to provide the, the training, they're, they're certified in it for all first responders. I know there are some free, free stuff out there, but this is-
We're going in an order.
Certified training and that's what we want.
Thank you, that, that, we'll clarify it, I'm sure. Okay, and Trustee Lutford?
No report.
No report. Thank you very much for all your reports and, um, let's see, then the other item we have on unfinished business was the Toy Memo, uh, regarding the new law requiring the clerk to attest all checks written. So having been at the Toy Educational Conference early last week, I will tell you that, um, I apparently chose wisely and went to, um, more varied sessions because by the time I got to the supervisors' division meeting, uh, some people said that they had been in four different meetings that discussed this very topic. I, that was the only one that I attended that discussed this topic. The, um, the interesting thing is that although Toy is taking the position, Township Officials of Illinois is taking the official position that a clerk should countersign every check, virtually every township is ripping out their hair over a concept like that because it just, it just doesn't happen, even, you know, we're a small township and we still write a lot of checks and it, banks don't care about a second signature and for clerks to come in, they're not full-time jobs, for clerks to come in to sign utility bills, I mean, some things we pay routinely. And it also doesn't address what you do about electronic payments, which are becoming more and more prevalent. Therefore, um, the, the attorneys' division and apparently attorneys who addressed many of the other sessions were united in saying, "The law doesn't say that." The law that was passed does not say that the clerk has to sign every check. And in fact, we have had a document, um, the, the township has had a document in the past that trustees sign, that certify that you've, um, basically, that you've audited the warrants and a similar kind of document would be acceptable in the view of the attorneys for, uh, the Township Officials of Illinois, where the clerk would validate. Now, it could be as simple as looking at our bank statements because we do still, even though we don't get them in print, we get them electronically and it shows every check actually written and the clerk could review all that, say, "Yes, that is the supervisor's signature, I'm signing that certification that I've, that I have, uh, reviewed and certified to it." So I don't think we've got as big a problem as we at first thought, thank heavens. Um, I think, apparently, even after all that discussion, Toy was still, um, insisting on that, but I think that Toy is going to be directed, especially by the supervisors' division, to go back to the legislature and get clarification of the intent, even though apparently it was proposed by the Township Officials of Illinois as legislation. Uh, just, it boggles the mind, but anyway, we should be able to get an attestation clause that covers all of the checks written, uh, clerk reviewing them in the one group signature, one felt swoop. So that is all I have to report on that. Are there any other questions, anything relating to any of these items that we have not covered? Not, we can go to the warrants and Trustee Dropka, will you cover the warrants for us?
I make a motion that the board authorized a modified payment of the bills identified on the general warrant in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty-three cents, as presented to the board today, the twen, the nineteenth?
The twentieth.
Twentieth of November.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Dropka, seconded by Trustee Hahnbach, to approve the general warrants of November twenty eighteen in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty-three cents. Any questions? Then Clerk Blau, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hahnbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I make a motion that the board ratified and authorized payment in the amounts as indicated by utility warrant of a thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars, sixty-eight cents, payroll twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents, health one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents, general assistance three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, sixty-two cents, uh, radio players for two hundred dollars, food pantry in the amount of a thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, motion by Trustee Dropka, seconded by Trustee Clerk, to approve the following November twenty eighteen warrants and I noticed that some of these, one of them at least has twenty nineteen. Not quite. Anyway, uh, the warrants as follows, the utility warrant in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, the payroll warrant in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents, the health warrant in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twelve cents, the, hm, general assistance warrant in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents, the great, the township radio players warrant in the amount of two hundred dollars and the food pantry warrant in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eighty-two cents. Motion and second has been heard. Trust, uh, I'm sorry, Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hahnbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay, don't, I'm sorry, that's-
Motion is carried, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.